Okay, it's six oh two, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to start, I know, with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence, let's think about those who've gone before us. Thank you. Roll call please.
Trustee O'Malley.
I'm here.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
Trustee Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Trustee Bushner.
He is here.
Trustee Collin. And Trustee Lewis.
Here.
And Attorney Gilchrist.
Correct. Alright, we have, uh, the glorious, wonderful Phil Leonard here. Thank you for coming, thank you for offering, uh, to educate us all on Nathaniel Shipman, AKA Natty Bumbo. So please, Mr. Leonard, the floor is yours and thank you for coming.
People don't know me, I'm the town historian, ninety-three years old. I've been at the museum for twenty years, so, uh, on a volunteer basis, and I'm very happy to be here. Now, I'll give you some history because in order to understand what we're doing, it's this Saturday at one o'clock, we're having Natty Bumbo Day. To start about the history, back in eighteen hundred and seventy-four, Levi Chandler Ball, who lived in the house between the two Saint Mary's buildings, you know, where, uh, I forget his-
Where Bob, uh-
Bob Becker lives.
Becker lives, yes, but that was originally built in eighteen thirty-seven for, by Chandler Ball. And, uh, he started talking about, you know, we got a guy in town that really should be looked into because he, uh, I think he's the guy that, uh, James Fenimore Cooper na- uh, uh, copied his characters from. And he's from Husick Falls and we should, there, there used to be a stone there, but it isn't there anymore and we should be getting together and put a stone in there. Well, what happened was, the people in, um, um, Cooperstown, where James Fenimore Cooper, uh, wrote his five books of leather stocking, they were very popular in the forties when we used to go to the movies and we had the Pathfinder and the, all those, everybody knew about The Last of the Mohicans and so forth. I don't think they read it as much as they used to. But, um, so, what happened, um, in eighteen hundreds, now, I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna take too much time, but I think you should understand why we're doing this. In eighteen hundred, the town had one street, and that was Main Street, and it ended right where the, uh, wood block is and the parking lot, there was a tavern put there. And then, from there, all the way down to where the Baptist church is now, there was a parade ground, seventy-eight feet wide, all the way down to that point. And, uh, uh, they built a meeting house there, which is now the Baptist church, but they, a meeting house that any religion could use it. And, uh, that lasted in eighteen forty-seven, when the Baptists took over, when the people were, uh, the Baptists were really the most that were going there, so they took over the church and it became a Baptist church. Alright, now to get back, we get to Cooper, he had a person that, uh, was called Hawkeye, was called Natty Bumbo, was called all these, uh, five different names, but Natty Bumbo was one of the most important ones. And the historians say that Cooper didn't have, he didn't like to write about characters, he always made characters from people he knew. So, that's where the question started. Because in eighteen, uh, seventy-four, they were starting to collect money to put a tombstone up in the old church, uh, yard, because in eighteen hundred, when they built the, uh, park and everything else, they put the cemetery back in there. So that cemetery that's in back of the Baptist church was built in eighteen hundred. And most of the people in there are from eighteen hundred to the eighteen forties and so forth. Alright, so, the story is, around that time, uh, Cooperstown starts saying, well, we got a guy by the name of David Shipman that he copied from. And the people in Husick Falls said, oh no, it was Nathan, uh, um, Nathan Shipman. So, big fight started between Cooperstown and Husick Falls. And they start, and this woman had a lot of money, that, who was the aunt to, uh, the, this David Shipman. And it couldn't have been David Shipman, because we had enough proof, we sent, uh, uh, Joyce, and by the way, Joyce Brewer, our, uh, director of the museum, is sitting right back there, she's doing a terrific job. We got a brand new museum. If you haven't been to the museum, you haven't been in Husick Falls. We got the best museum and, uh, little museum in the town. Uh, Brian used to, when he was twelve years old, take people around the museum, right?
That's true.
Yeah, it's true, right?
That's awesome.
Okay, now-
I expect nothing less also.
So, there was a big fight going on, and it went on and on, and then finally it made all the newspapers in America way back in the eighteen hundreds. And both, both people dropped it, she built a statue, a leather stocking statue. Not, not about, uh, Natty Bumbo, but a, a statue about the books she wrote. Alright, so then, so that's been laying dormant now, for a hundred and fifty years. Well, a bunch of us at the museum, who, we've, we've gone through all these stories and everything, we decided to give it a try and go back to it and get a stone up there to show that Natty Shipman was part of Husick Falls. So, we worked on it, and, uh, Joyce helped us put in a, a request for a, a stone, I mean, for a, a historic marker, but you notice it's a different color.
Yeah.
It's not the blue, because it's legends and lore. This is a legend and lore sign, the, the regular signs come blue and yellow.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's history signs. This is legends and lore, because even though we had approved to them that we, why we thought Shipman was the one, they, but nobody can actually say it was the one, so this becomes a legend and lore. So, uh, what we did, we, uh, we went up to the cemetery, well, I made this for you, because I want you to see this. We went up to that cemetery in May and I looked at it and I said, oh my god, asking people to come up to this cemetery? So, about two weeks ago, Joyce and, uh, uh, Corinne and, uh, Mrs. Gaylord, they went up there with, uh, three people from the church, and they worked two and a half hours. Just two and a half hours, and I wanna show you what happened. You see that? See that stone right there? That's what was in May when I took the picture, that's the way it is right now.
Nice job.
Uh, here's, I was told by a professional, you couldn't straighten that stone up, it was in three parts. Well, the difference is, the guys that were from the church, they didn't know that that's supposed to do it, so they did it. And look at it, look how they're standing up, you can see, look down here. And, look at these here.
Yeah, that's, that's incredible.
And the bottom picture, it's just unbelievable what you can do. And when you think, I ride around, I look at all the cemeteries, if, if there are groups of people that wanna spend five hours a week even, they could get the cemetery shining. In fact, I offered a guy five years ago, two thousand dollars to do it, and he said he was too busy, he's got too many other cemeteries to do, so he had a good business. Okay, so, on the thirteenth, we're gonna put, we've got a stone, and the stone is, uh, right there, it's in there, here's the picture of where it is, right there. It's covered right now, we're gonna, uh, dedicate that, we're gonna dedicate the-
Sign.
Sign. And the church is gonna talk about, somebody from the church is gonna talk about the history of the church. We're gonna have refreshments inside, and we're gonna have, uh, uh, the church is gonna set up a, a display of their history. And I, I think it's gonna be a great day, so, we wanted you to know about it. And we're, look, we're excited about it, I mean, you know, we're historians and we're kinda different, I guess, but we're excited about it, so, I hope you can come, and I hope you can see that it's gonna be a nice day for the community. If you got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but that's, that was in a nutshell. I could give you a lot of history, but I'm not gonna bore you.
Thank you, Phil.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Hey Phil, come on! I do admit, some stuff is boring, they were asleep today.
Phil, how long have you been doing the, the boards?
I've done the boards for about fifteen years, I've done a hundred and sixty of them.
Yeah.
Phil, thank you for everything you do, you are incredible, you are a treasure.
We have a hundred and sixty of those and we got a closet, we don't know where to put them, we got so many of them.
We're gonna have to have the, uh, Phil Leonard Museum someday.
No, no. This girl here is making the best museum, uh, I'll tell you, there's nothing like a woman's, uh, touch. Yesterday, we had a meeting about turkeys. I don't tell you, I don't tell you anything else.
We have a plaque that we found downstairs, it's extremely heavy, that we have mounted in the police station, um, that Phil came up with review, and it's quite old. I think it's in the wrong spot, I think it needs to be put somewhere else, because there's a lot of history there.
That's the one in, in your office on the side, right?
They put it there, but it's not being seen, and I don't, I know there was concerns, Jerry and I talked originally, if we put it out, out here, that, um, if it becomes damaged or something.
Cause it's been inside for years, right?
And it's kinda, it's not in the good spot in the police station.
It's historic, it's really very historic.
It's actually still got the, um, char burns on it from the municipal building.
When it burned down, right?
So I think maybe we can come to some thought as to where, whose thing gets placed so more people can see it.
Sounds good. I think it's a good idea.
Just one other thing, this is only four pages, the booklet's gonna be eight pages.
Awesome.
We only gave a handful of books.
Awesome, save some.
We want you to come and get the other half of that.
That means we have, we have to show up to get the-
Brilliant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Have a great day.
You know, just to say, if you, and no one's been to the museum lately, it is a whole new museum, it's incredible, and also Joyce has been very open to helping, and also accepting, what, you know, seventeen middle schoolers and, and she still talks to me.
Yeah?
But, uh, thank you for all you-
We got thirty-one brand new windows in it, and the house was built in the eighteen eighties.
That's great.
So we put in thirty-one, we can actually open a window now, which is hilarious.
Outstanding.
For fifteen years, we didn't do it, because there was just two guys trying to keep it open.
Thank you, guys. Alright, uh, announcements of correspondence, we already mentioned, uh, this Saturday, the, July thirteenth at one P M, Natty Bumbo Day. Also, the village is looking, uh, still looking for two people to serve on the zoning grant. Alright, got a slew of updates, uh, that I'm going to plow through here, so lots happened over the past month, but the, uh, the running theme is that we have a lot of things going on. We have a lot of people, trustees and employees involved in all, all aspects of it, and I'll be like, kind of, asking them to comment on things as they go through. Um, but this is kind of the phase that we're in right now, is getting all these things to continue to move and, and, and go forward, so. First off, in, uh, on the state news, yesterday, um, the New York State accept, uh, Governor Cuomo specifically, uh, accepted the recommendations from the Drinking Water Quality Council for maximum contaminant levels on PFOA, PFOS, and one-four dioxane, so I'm gonna put out this statement later this evening, unless any of you guys have a problem with it. Uh, and the statement goes as follows, "Yesterday, Governor Cuomo announced that he is directing the Department of Health to begin the process of adopting maximum contaminant levels for PFOA, PFOS, and one-four dioxane. This is an essential and important step to assure the protection of public health in New York. We extend our thanks to Governor Cuomo and the Drinking Water Quality Council for proposing the lowest MCLs in the nation for PFOA and PFOS. The establishment of the MCLs is not the end of the process. We recognize that the science is advancing, and we anticipate that over time, these values may need to be lowered as further data is gathered and studies are conducted. Husick Falls has been on the front line of PFOA and PFOS exposure, and the lessons learned from our experiences have played important roles in driving the dialogue across the state and country on PFOS chemicals and drinking water standards. From changes in state legislation to proposed bills in Congress, many residents of Husick Falls have given up their time and energy to push forward, uh, this important concern. That effort has been expended out of an awareness that the health and well-being of our families and communities are at stake. To all who have participated in this process, uh, and who have made their voices heard, thank you. This is an important step forward for our state, and especially with the profound lack of a federal response to these contaminants, we appreciate New York becoming a leader in responding to PFOS contamination. We look forward to the completion of the MCL process in a few months." So we put, I'll put that out later tonight after the meeting. Um, next update, the Community Performance Working Group meeting, uh, happened in June, uh, I think it was the twenty-seventh. Uh, as requested by the group, um, DEC and DOH were on hand to present substantial updates on all of the remedial efforts and investigations. They gave a brief overview on history and structure of the state superfund process. They went through and gave a status update on each site, where, and where each investigation, uh, was at in terms of the, everything going on. Uh, we also talked a bit about the alternate water supply study. Questions were asked by both members of the, of the C, uh, CPWG, and also by, uh, people who came to listen. Uh, it was, um, it was a really, really nice meeting, I thought, and very productive. Um, there weren't a lot of new things that came out, but I feel like it's worth mentioning that there are a couple new sites that are under the radar, just because of the historic use of, um, uh, PFOS chemicals. Uh, the old Dodge building is now a, um, a P site, which means based on the history of what happened there, they're looking into it. Um, they're proposing sampling, and they're gonna begin in, in about six to eight weeks, but that's, that's very early on. Uh, Interface Solutions has been determined as a P site as well, just because of the way they responded to their, um, PFOA, POF, usage and storage survey. So, and this is all very early on. Um, the Schmiegel site, the Schmiegel landfill site, which was a, a former state superfund site that was remediated, somewhere, where is that?
That was an EPA site, that was a federal-
That was a federally-
In North Uzic.
North Uzic, right?
Is it the one on, um- It's north of sixty-seven, toward the, um, Sunnyside.
Oh, okay, behind Sunny, okay, yeah.
So that, um, they're going to look back into that, because even though it was remediated based on whatever, um, contaminants they had at the time, they are concerned that PFOS could be there. And Columbia, which, is that the one just past the drive-in?
Columbia, it used to be Columbia Box, yeah, now it's, um-
Which is the recycling center.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, that has also been labeled a P site. Um, the, what they said, this, uh, at the meeting was that the owners recently declined to do the investigation, uh, so the state will commence that, and I'm under the impression from just knowing some people up in that area that they already had, um, some poets installed based on some contaminants in the water supply up there. Um, but that's just another sort of layer they're looking into. Uh, in terms of the alternate water supply study, um, there wasn't, I think, anything colossally new. The options under consideration, um, in terms of a new surface water source, it's really only gonna be the Tom Hennec is an option, the Husick River does not have enough capacity, the Hudson River, they just looked at a little bit, but nah, no. Uh, they looked at other water bodies to the north and east. Um, if they went, if the Tom Hennec reservoir was a choice, it would still need local treatment and it, you know, because of the twelve to fifty miles of pipeline. In terms of the groundwater source, um, they talked about the original test on the Waitsake property that didn't have enough capacity. Um, there's also a, a, another well that they've been working on, they're calling it the La Croix well, uh, which I think is the one near Falls Diner, in between Falls Diner and, um, Bianca's on that same side. It's the one they've been working on back on that field.
Oh, yeah.
Um-
By the old Reddins farm.
They finished the pump test, things looked promising, is what they said. Uh, it would still need to be treated at the existing water stream plants. Not sure if the GAC would be needed, so there's a lot more they have to look into, and they're looking into a lot of the hy- uh, hydrogeological investigations of how pulling from there would affect other things. In terms of an existing municipal water supply, it's still looking, uh, the, they looked into the possibility of this, but Troy would be the only municipal supply to tap into, and that run could actually be longer than a run to the Tom Hennec. They've thought about fifteen to sixty miles on that. Um, other options that they have to look into because of the structure of these investigations, including, uh, include, um, basically staying where we're at with a GAC and, uh, upgrading the existing water system with remediation, so. Um, they're still looking to have that report out, um, July sometime, probably late July. Uh, and they will have a public comment period. Once the public comment period, uh, is done, uh, then they will respond to the public comments and issue a, a rotting record of decision. Um, and that's when I think the final decision will, will be, uh, will be made. Uh, I know Lorraine is in the, is in the group, so she was there. Um, Board, do you have any questions on anything, I sort of went over there? That's kind of the update on, on all that stuff. Lorraine, did I miss anything big? DOH?
Other than them coming back, um, on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, the next meeting will be on the twenty-fourth.
And just to let everybody know, like, our public meetings.
Yeah, so anyone can go. And in fact, they took questions, uh, from not, not only us, but from anyone who was there in the public who had a question.
Where, where and when is the meeting?
The last one was at the Armory, they're trying to decide between four and six o'clock, but I think the location will still be the Armory? Mark, do you know that?
It's up in the air.
I think it's up in the air right now, but we'll, we'll make sure it's out of public, yeah. Uh, okay, the next update, switching gears to grants, programs, and current projects that are running. Uh, we're gonna start with the one point one million dollar highway grant, uh, garage grant. We got the bid results back for HVAC and plumbing, and they weren't good. Uh, it's gonna require another seventy thousand dollars, uh, for HVAC and plumbing, on top of what it used to be. Um, we do have some bid tabulation stuff here, uh, in terms of, and I also, um, I gave you guys an email, uh, from today, um, that pretty much, yeah, summarizes my frustration with things, because, as we talked about last meeting, we had planned specifically to, it's over here, to structure the bid cycle, so that the bids would be out, uh, for a certain amount of time. And we would get the bids opened, uh, this previous Tuesday, a week ago, and then we have the letter of summary, um, for tonight. Uh, we were supposed to get it yesterday, I thought, we didn't have it. This morning, I sent an email, uh, said it was being worked on. Yeah, here you go. And, um, as you see from the email chain that I, I, I think I gave you guys, uh, it took five hours, it came in complete, it came in about two hours before our meeting, uh, and we're in a bind, because, uh, this was a one point one million dollar grant, that we'd found ways to make work at approximately one point three, by budgeting, uh, a lot of stuff, uh, out of DPW existing projects. Uh, and now it's coming in at, what, one point four-three? Um, we got it two hours ahead of time, I think the actual bid tabulations and other documents came in about an hour and a half before. Um, I obviously expressed my deep frustration at this. Um, and we will have to come back to this in the meeting unless you wanna talk about it now. Um, but we have a decision to make, tell you what, we'll wait until Phil comes up in the meeting. Um, but I think that Neil and I are gonna be recommending that we, we, we wait and, and get some more things planned out, but we'll, we'll come back to that, uh, when it comes up in the, in the regular business.
Is the engineering firm liable at all for any of the cost overruns since they dealt their mistake?
Andy?
We're gonna, we're gonna review it.
I was gonna bring it up, like, this seems to be a series that's not a situation comedy in terms of this particular firm and flubs and screw-ups and setting us behind, and I feel like, uh, when does that stop? You know, we, we've hired them to do a job, multiple jobs, and multiple things have been repeatedly not done well, not done correctly, they've been, you, we all know what I'm talking about with all of these, so what, I'm getting a little sick of it.
Well, we got more coming, so let me keep going with the updates that are all related.
Cause, you know, Neil needs a new garage, they're gonna owe him two trucks in it.
Yeah, that's true.
Trying to.
Um, the Snow Street Grant, the Rensselaer Street Pump Station is going to be finalized on Thursday. During that time, the water in that area, uh, will be off from eight A M. to four P M. Um, that date, I think, was sort of postulated last week, but got finalized today. We reached out to M R V. to see if anyone was going to get information to residents, and there wasn't a plan, so, uh, Josh and I put together a notice, um, Marie and the office staff quickly got it ready, um, and Josh and Jim hand-delivered it to the sixty or seventy homes in the area after, at the end of their day today.
They called and asked if I'd go help, and I was like, alright, I'm free, and he goes, we're done.
And I was at home watching, watching kids, so I couldn't do it.
He, he really, but thank you for doing that.
We also have it up on Facebook, um, I put it up on Facebook and I'll put it on the website tonight as well, so. Um, we're expecting the service to be down from eight A M. to four P M., we're just asking people not to, uh, use water during that time. Um, but the good news is, when this is done, all of the infrastructure improvements up in that area are finally complete, and everything is very, very good. And that's all, so that's good, that's a big plus. Uh, sewer project, not much has happened over the past month, which is also frustrating. We do have a revised work plan approval, um, but we're still waiting for contractors to give detailed proposals on the cost of doing the work in compliance with the work plan. This will eventually lead to us to having discussions with E F C. and also Honeywell on, on financing all this. Andy, anyone else wanna add to that?
Uh, no, and follow up to Kevin, we are trying to put the meeting together, uh, with M R V. And with the villages consultants, uh, either later this week or next week, to try to, to keep the project moving forward.
Yeah.
To postpone it.
Yeah. Um, and on top of that, Brian, I'm sure in your Greenway report, you'll be discussing the Greenway, because, uh, one of the questions I had earlier this week was, uh, uh, I think, uh, are they done with their work putting the Greenway back together, and I think that the contractors may have had the impression that yes, and that we're all, uh, new way, and, but you'll, we'll, we'll talk about that in your report. Yep. Um, the other major project that's going on right now is the Woodsbrook Buyout Program, and we have four signed contracts with homeowners. Uh, so that we will be purchasing those homes, they will be selling them, um, to the village, and we may have as many as seven by the next meeting, um, possibly even some s- closing scheduled by then. Uh, the remaining part of the process is that we get the closing documents together, we have to get them to the state to, to be reviewed.
Right, so the general process is now that they're signing contracts, we'll put closing packages together. Those need to be sent to the state, and they'll need to review them, approve the closing documents. And we've been told it takes two to three weeks, um, minimum. And once that's signed off, then we can schedule the closings, and, you know, the monies are dispersed, and then we date title, and we'll sit down and close.
We're midnight, guys, John.
So finally, we'll be public.
Yeah, so likely at the end of summer, we'll start hopefully closing on a couple houses. Um, and once we've sort of closed on this initial list, we'll see what sort of funds we have left. We have a couple other things are moving on, um, but that's where we're at, so, um, likely, uh, by next year, we're gonna sort of have an idea of what are our final targets, what do we have left, uh, to do? Uh, and then, once we have acquired everything that we can, and everyone has paid out as they need to be, then we do, uh, the study with the money, the state aside, on what happens with the properties we have. We do have to plan demolition, but that will be coming eventually, that's a long term. So that's a Woodsbrook, uh, update. Other village-related business, the transfer station update. This is kind of a big deal, because this is, uh, something that is out of our control, and we are having to change, uh, a little bit of what we do, uh, right now. Uh, do the changes with how recycling is being handled on a global basis. We are now, um, being charged to handle recycling, which is new, we've never had that before. Uh, this is gonna be a significant charge, we're, we're talking about likely, and Ben, you were in the meeting and you've talked to, to Matt, do you wanna pipe, jump in?
Yeah, um, the, the company that was taking out recyclables will now not take them out for free. Uh, they wanna charge us a hundred dollars a ton. It could be as low as seventy, but we'll go with a higher figure at one hundred. Between January and April of this year, uh, we did almost, uh, ten tons of, uh, recyclables. And that means that, I mean, as village residents, we put ours out at the, at the end of our block, end of our street, but this must be coming from town residents somewhere outside of the village. Uh, but I mean, it's gonna be expensive, and you're talking about a thousand dollars every four months, it's three thousand dollars a year that, you know, village residents should not have to pay for, because we have our own recycling and that's taken care of. The reason why they're charging us is because China doesn't accept the recyclables anymore, and it's just kind of backed up everything to here, um, where they're not gonna take them out for free. So that, the discussion started once we found out that we were gonna be charged for it. So, we have to find a way to, um, make the village whole by making the people that drop off recyclables pay for them, um, for their disposal. So, um, the mayor and I had a meeting yesterday, talking about it with Neil. the mayor and I had a meeting yesterday talking about it with Neil. And we chucked up at the uh transfer station to try and work out some things to try and lessen that amount that we're going to uh have to charge. And I think there's a few different ways that uh that we can do that. Um, and hopefully be able to put enough money to to even it out, because that's what.
Yeah, so, so thank you.
I mean, I don't think we're ever, I don't think we're ever gonna make money on it, but if we can get even and at least pay for what we what we're sending out.
Right.
That's about all we can ask.
And the goal, the goal is to continue to provide the service, but we can't be taking a huge hit for for providing the service. Um, right now, we're gonna leave most things sort of as it is price-wise, cause we don't wanna change much and some things aren't really affected by this. Um, household garbage uh is currently charged two dollars for a small white bag, three dollars for a thirty gallon bag and six dollars for over thirty gallon ba- uh, over thirty gallons. Um, what we wanna propose is we wanna propose upping that to three dollars, five dollars, and ten dollars respectively. And charging for recycling for the first time at the exact same rates. Three dollars for a small white bag of recycling, uh, third uh thirty gallon uh bag for five dollars. And over thirty gallons would be ten dollars.
I think if, I think if finer people uh know that you're not, we're not recycling anymore, they're just gonna chuck it into the wreck their garbage bag anyway.
Well, that's not, that's I.
I mean, it's the same cost.
Right.
Yeah.
But i- if you think about it, if we're not putting it in there, then they're not gonna be charging us for it, so.
Yeah, that's true.
I I totally get what you're saying, but if if somebody puts it in a white bag and they pay two dollars or three dollars for a white bag, whether it's got recyclables in it or not, they're not gonna check it when they do it. And if they don't put it in the recyclables, we're not gonna get charged. But I would never advocate to do that.
Right.
You know, we all wanna try and recycle, but you know, again, it's gotta be for, we we've gotta try and get some of this money back because it's just.
Is Urshwama looking into finding a different hauler? Is there any other options for them to?
Um, I've talked to Matt about that. Um, I think he's working as many sources as he possibly can. There's a lot of, there's a lot of influx with with stuff like this right now, especially with recyclables, um, because they're not taking it. Um, and different companies are selling to others and and going private and things like that. We we talked about in the meeting last night that uh there's um up in Jackson, uh, outside of Cambridge that they, and correct me if I'm wrong, Neil, that they burn their stuff up there, is that right? Or send it to be burned?
But used to.
Used to send to Hudson Falls, maybe.
So, um, and they were talking about, right, outside of Queensberry in Hudson Falls. Um, but then they had something happen too, so I again, it's very fresh because we just talked about it last night. Um, but I would like to at least, you know, call some places and find out what they what they do and and find out if there's any way that we can, you know, bring the bring the number closer to where we need to be.
Is there a difference in price between the permit for a village resident and a town resident?
Yeah, a village resident is ten dollars and a non-resident is twenty.
We also have a a residential contractor commercial for thirty and a non-resident contractor commercial for fifty. We did talk about some possible changes overall in this and and ways to do the permitting a little bit differently, so it's more accurate or more. I mean, we we just recently have been doing color coding and printing the year of of the uh permit on cause you just get the uh a permit one time and it's good for the calendar year.
Right.
But I think what we're thinking is in the fall, we sit down and and decide what do we wanna make changes on, what do we need to make changes on, and roll that out for next calendar year.
So it's the thought in terms of, at least with the recycling, where we're not charging it directly, but if it's coming, you think from non-village residents that maybe that permit goes up two dollars or three overall. It might actually put extra money into the, just a suggestion. That might actually put extra money in to take care of any overages and then we can look from there.
I do wanna sit down with the town and I'm not gonna put you on the the hot seat tonight, so I haven't talked to you as town supervisor about this yet, but I do wanna sit down with the town and talk them through, talk this through with them and see what their thoughts are, so.
We're not proposing taking any action tonight, right?
Uh, we could if we wanted to. I mean, we were thinking that we could, we could offer, we could put up for a motion to make the price changes tonight.
Or 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 we could.
Or we can wait.
Table it until August.
I guess I haven't had the chance to see it or read it or think about it.
That's fine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it, I, right, um. I I don't know if it's necessarily fleshed out as much as it could be, seeing as we just talked about it a day ago, but yeah, I I think.
It does seem like it's urgent that we need to act on it this month. We can.
Well, we are, we are down a thousand dollars that we didn't expect to spend from January to April.
But it, but again, that's, that's what we found out recently. It's not anything that, it's not anything that we've known for four months and all of a sudden it's like, well, we just kinda dragged it along. We just found out, so, um. You know, we'll do our due diligence between now and the next meeting and and I'll get emails out to everybody and let you know, or get it to the mayor and he can get it out to you and and then we can talk about it.
Don't wanna do more harm than good.
That's fine. No, 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 absolutely not.
What's the detriment um to eliminating taking the recyclables at the transfer station? Because village residents, and it's a village-operated transfer station. The village, each village resident has the opportunity to get the recyclables in at their curbside, so.
Well, for people who have more recycling and wanna dump it as an extra dump, they lose that option for village residents.
Yeah, once in a while, when I have extra cardboard, I just take it up there myself on a Saturday.
Yep.
It does get used. Uh, what I didn't realize is uh it was one of the town residents that came in here the other day and was wondering about being charged now for the recycling. And he's, and I said, well, you know, why do you bring it here? He said, well, why wouldn't I? I I don't have to get a garbage service at my house. And I can do it a lot cheaper just by bringing it in to the village.
That's exactly.
You know, so that's a Bobby's point, but uh I didn't, you know, I live in the village, so you know, I didn't realize, I know we don't have any service stuff. Everybody, you know, does their own, you know, as far as.
Right, and that's that's what we offer i- is the village and that's what the people pay for is the weekly garbage, the weekly recycling. So what may have happened over the years is that the majority of the house look garbage and the majority of the recycling that's coming in is actually coming in from town residents who aren't paying for their own pickup and have realized that this may be a cheaper option for them.
Yeah, but it also happened, Rob, back when, back when we were on the, when I was on the town, we eliminated recycling in the town.
Right.
They had, they had recycling options at for town residents at the at the town highway garage, so then now if the onus falls on the village and that's, why should the village be paying additional for, you know, for something that the town is generating? I'm not trying to segregate and separate between the two of us, but in this case, we really have to.
I just think people don't sometimes realize that that's a village thing, cause sometimes people aren't sure what board we're on.
Oh, I I I think, I think they do. I I I think they do. After, I mean, just, but yeah, I think we should definitely do some discussion and some, I don't wanna act on it tonight by any means.
There may be an opportunity for some shared services there, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, so maybe we'll circle back with the town.
Okay.
Uh, and maybe we'll come back. We'll get some ideas out probably uh by a week before the next meeting and maybe we'll have some proposals on that. Alright, great.
Before I forget, and for later when you do your report, I wanted to ask about that um advertisement that was set by Urshwama.
Did you bring it?
I forgot it.
Ah, I forgot it too. Although it didn't say Urshwama on it.
No, the the postage, look at the postage on it. The postage meter number was, their initials are right there. So they sent an ad for a private dumpster company. And I was looking at like, oh, that's a good deal for a dumpster if you need one, but then I noticed the postage paid was through them.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to, I guess I just brought it up, but.
That's fine. I'm I'm just.
It just seemed odd that they'd be spending money to send out an advertisement on their meter, so.
I'm just gonna send an email while we're talking.
You didn't get it?
I got it, but I didn't catch that.
I didn't catch it either.
I don't know why I catch it. Or was that, uh?
Like, so you know what, it'll say the prepaid postage amount, like printed right on it, what the permit is, and it was their permit on mine.
Yeah, where was the company located, remember?
I don't remember. They served Southern Vermont, uh, Northwestern Massachusetts and here, so they're somewhere either in Southern Vermont or.
Adams.
Maybe North Adams, yeah. They were not in New York State, though. That was another.
Was it bigger than a postcard? Like a, it was like a?
It was a jumbo postcard, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Alright, so a few more updates. Um, in terms of the gazebo, I got to meet with Neil, Kevin, and Jerry. Thank you guys for doing that to discuss upcoming plans uh for the gazebo. Uh, and we've talked in before, uh, especially with Bill Gaylord, um, we've already decided to move on uh going fifty fifty to replace the flooring, which was put in about four or five years ago, I think. Only four or five years ago, but already shows signs of wear and peeling up and so on and so forth, to moving it to Trex. So we're, we've already planned to do that and we're planning to do the work after the summer concert season in the fall. Um, I'm gonna meet with Bill Gaylord and see how many of the community band people will be able to help with the installation of that. Cause I think they did it before, so I think they'll be jumping to do that again. Um, Kevin, do you wanna give an update on the speakers?
Um, well, finally after, I think the mayor called after I sent previous emails.
I didn't realize you sent the email. I called this morning. It's like, oh, I got an email.
I think he emailed me back right after you called and said that uh I, he probably just called the company and asked them what the price was for the part, and the part's back ordered, so they won't be available for some time. So, he offered us um new speakers for three hundred and fifty dollars for two. And uh to fix the ones that we have now would be two hundred dollars. So I think we're just gonna wait until the part comes in and pay the two hundred dollars.
Cause right now the two speakers are all pointing this way and that way and it's worked fine. Um, so when the others, it's not, it's not a dire need right now to get them, but that's, I I would kind of agree the same thing. I think we just wait and get it repaired.
Yeah, they weren't that old, they're probably.
Yeah.
Four years.
Um, and then we talked to Jerry and Neil and what they're gonna do is they're gonna adjust the grade around the gazebo, cause right now about five feet out from the edge, it kind of all grades down to the, towards the gazebo, which is the opposite of what we want, so. They talked about um adding soil almost up to about ten feet up to regrade it and putting some three-quarter inch crushed stone, crushed rock, is that right, Neil? Uh, around the um the base to reduce a lot of the splashing that hits the uh gazebo. And I think we also decided that that's gonna be a product for after the concert season in the fall. So, those are the upgrades for that.
What about the, what about the rest of the gazebo as far as the spindles and the railings and the, I mean, that's I mean, cause looking at the photos that Kevin showed or sent, as far as looking at those lag spears sticking up through that, to me.
He just took a bunch of those, right?
Does not.
Yeah, took them off yesterday.
Okay.
But yeah.
Spindles off? Or all the, all the spears? No lag spears, yeah.
Um, that's a conversation we need to have with with um Bill and the group to see if 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 replacing all the railings. And he, you brought up the idea of a cable railing system.
Cable or a uh metal pole, poster, whatever, it goes in the middle, but either way.
Um, and I know that uh.
What what's the other kind of material used for the plastic stuff uh I've seen in some houses and decks?
Trex. Is that the Trex as well?
No, it's at Trex. It's more of a plastic type uh.
Yeah, it has a wood core with plastic exterior, yeah.
Alright, so those are uh more discussions we need to have on it, but Mark, are those, is that railing to code? I mean, as an existing building, it would be, but if we replace those railings, I mean, those things are low.
Yeah, they have to be uh, I have to, I think it's thirty.
Thirty-six?
Thirty to thirty-six. There's a range that they can be.
This one's probably at thirty inches, I would say.
It's 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 gotta be like the lowest possible. I mean, I know it'd be grand followed in, but if we change it, I think it's gotta be way higher.
And and have we looked at, have we contacted any outside contractors for an estimate or anything like that or?
No, not yet.
Material wise?
Not yet with that, no. Um, so that's it for the gazebo, so thank you guys for being involved in that. Um, we have received a couple complaints in the office, um, and some, I see some discussions online about burning pits and fires within the village. Um, Mark gave me the uh, the list of of laws and rules. It's specific to a local law number one of two thousand twelve, when it was all sort of discussed and defined. Um, but I think the key takeaway um to understand about burning in the in the village um is two, two points. First off, the fire needs to be less than three feet in height and less than four feet in length, width, and diameter. Uh, based on the local law's definition of of a fire. And there's a certain proximity, it has to be away from structures. Um, fires and proof containers are, that are not, uh, have to be uh more than fifteen feet from a structure. The minimum distance from a structure shall be twenty-five feet um for an open fire. Um, and then I don't.
New structure will be one of your fire business, like you buy.
Yeah. So, I'm gonna speak with the chief on this and make sure that the police officers understand these these rules as according to the local law, so if people have issues.
It's supposed to be clean wood and things like that, not unpainted wood. Part of the problem we're running into the village is people burn their recyclables or they're burning wet wood and causing a lot of smoke.
Yeah.
You know, it can start a fire. I mean, I have a fire in my house a lot. You know, initially you might have a little bit of smoke when you get it going. Once a fire's burned properly, you don't have any, you don't have a lot of smoke.
So.
And if there, if there is, they're not burning good, the right materials.
I think what we may do maybe this week or next week is put together just a simple brief, like, couple paragraphs of of here are the rules in the village. Get, get it in the website, get it in the newspapers and get it on Facebook, just so everybody knows. Yeah, reminder for the summer season here and fire rules.
I mean, my problem is I go out to measure the height and width, my ruler burns up.
It was a matter of one, Brian.
Alright, uh, last update. Thank you for bearing with, but I thought it's important for everybody to know what's going on. Um, I was finally able to have a productive sit down with Jackie regarding our overall phone system for the village and how it ties into voicemail, internet, and all of the hardware here, most of which is over in the in the police office. Um, now that we understand all the parts and we have some weird situations here and I have to speak with the chief more, but I mean, for we're still running off of like individual landlines needed for every single thing we do, so I think our, we we pay for somewhere between like fifteen and twenty individual landlines.
Oh.
A lot of those are here, but we also would have the wastewater treatment plant, the water plant, the highway garage. Um, there are a lot of solutions that are cloud and internet-based, where you don't have to be paying individual landline fees and all of the taxes and surcharges that they add on to that. Um, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to um explore this further with Denise, myself, possibly a trustee here. Um, maybe also chief to get a plan together to sort of come up with, here's what I think would work better and would be more cost-effective, because she uh was pretty adamant that we could save hundreds of dollars um or more on switching from what we're currently doing to what we could be doing. Now, we both agreed that if we did it, it should just be this building, so we should kind of leave the highway garage, the water plant, the wastewater treatment plant, set up in a, eh, the way they are now with whatever landlines, DSL, internet, whatever. But in terms of looking at here, I think um we can, if we get all this together, we can come up with a good plan for the internet and the phone system here uh within the building, so. So that's coming. Um, any trustee wanna hop in on the planning for that? Alright, okay, worth a try. Alright, chief, you just missed my, I finally met with Jackie up update.
Oh, good.
We gotta talk more because we currently have like fifteen to twenty total landlines and it's ridiculous and a lot of them are police lines, so we, we'll, we'll get together and figure out what's what and.
So it's something that we're heading in that direction?
We are heading in that direction. We're gonna try to get a plan together for next month, um, to make some changes here. The one last thing I forgot to mention is that all, for all of our hardware that we have, um, we're maxed out. We can't do any more phone lines here, because the equipment we have is old and.
The antiquated, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so, that's uh, that's everything. Alright, great. That's enough. I heard that. No, I don't know. Alright, uh, people to be heard. Just as a reminder, we record all um, um, meetings on my iPad and throw those up online. Uh, if anyone wants to speak, you just have to use your name and address. Can I get an idea of who would like to share? Um, just so I can know what time of it. Anyone like to speak tonight? Alright, moving on. Since we have no takers. Okay, um, I was able to get you guys the reports about five to six hours before the meeting. Um, I will try to get them a little bit uh earlier, like maybe before the weekend, next time. Um. So, I don't know who's gotten to read them and who hasn't, but I don't think we need to comment too much on some of them. Ben, is there anything you wanna highlight or it just is what it is?
Uh.
A lot of work in there.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff um in there, uh, bond paperwork being finalized uh regarding devolution, uh, payments on the invoice, and you've got a nice stack there. Uh, correspondent spreadsheet for the attorneys for P F O A update, so that was probably, that's probably took Denise forever, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but a lot of work.
Yeah.
I have a question regarding that. Did, did we receive?
Yes.
Our monies?
We have received funds from both St. Goan and Honeywell, yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah, we were tracking, I think we even, yeah, yeah, that, everything done and paid, all good. Uh, looking for motion to approve the treasure reports.
Motion.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Bobby, all in favor? Uh, host carries, please support chief. Oh, before he goes, I just wanna say that I um I tried to put together a little bit of a spreadsheet so we can see by month um calls and arrests and compare them to historical data. I didn't have all the information with me, but I'll try to fill this in more, but I'm sort of looking to switch the format a little bit, so it's simpler. Chief, take it away.
No, and that, and that, I reviewed it, it looks great, and I think it's gonna be much easier for everyone to understand as we go along. I'll just bring your attention to June.
Total calls for June were a hundred and fifty-one, you'll see that there was an increase from May from a hundred and forty-one. Total um calls for the year as of date is seven hundred eighty-one, last year at this time was six hundred thirty-two. Arrests in the month of June, eight, last month it was twenty-one, there was a drop. Um, I can't answer why. Uh, total arrests for two thousand nineteen were eighty-five. Um, and if you could see that there was a major jump from last year at this time in two fifty-nine. I'm not gonna go through all of the, the service calls are there listed here, I just wanna highlight domestic disputes, they're still on the rise, there's nineteen EMS, um there's twenty. And I wanna bring your attentions to law where it says youths annoying, um that's fourteen, and also includes arrests that we've had. Uh with the youths, it's uh something that. Uh, I'll bring your attention to a conversation I went to with town board meeting last night, um we spoke about the town park. Um, I suggested in which they agreed that the hours could change from seven AM to nine o'clock. Um, I just think by bringing it down a little bit is gonna be.
Chief, can I also make a suggestion on the park and also other areas? Um, some municipalities have started installing what they're known as um mosquito speakers. They're sounds that generally after age thirty you can't hear, but they are miserable for teenagers. They're a really high pitched sound that yearers are young enough to hear. People are actually installing these to keep kids, though they won't be there. Because it gives you a headache, you can't stand it, they're up high.
Really?
Yeah, you won't.
Why would we wanna do that?
So then when they close it at nine, they're not there, or you put in downtown if they're loitering, that's what municipalities are doing. It's better than playing disco.
Sounds like a good idea, but one of the things.
Sounds so crazy, but this is.
Attorney sitting over there, I'm sure someone's gonna sue the village minister or.
No, it's just playing it, some places play Bach to keep. Youth away, some play disco, this is a new one, it's just a high pitched constant sound and it's, adults can't hear it, that's, this is all real. I just wanna throw it out there, is that could be an option we look into.
They'll be shooting the speakers out.
We won't hear it.
Won't last long.
Yeah, so you saw a lot of, yeah, that's a, that's first I've heard of it too, but.
It's a new, it's a new technology.
It's a lot of residential right there.
Don't think we have that big of a problem that we need to.
And, and Bob, when you're talking about the nine o'clock, are you talking about the, the, the courts as well? The basketball courts, Mark too? The lights, what time do the lights go off now, Mark? Oh, you did, great, that's awesome.
So after nine o'clock, if kids are there, the police officers can drive in and be like, you gotta be out.
Right out of there.
Good.
And we've talked about the signage, they're gonna fix some of the signage, cause some of the signage is where they are is kinda, kinda, it needs to be repaired, so.
Like the ones that say no bikes on the court?
On the tennis courts?
Tennis courts. We talked about that.
Also no motorized ones.
Yeah, no motorcycles.
But I, but I think I should highlight that during the daytime in, in, at this time of night, there are. Um, families that are using that down there, they might bring their kid there to, so they can learn how to ride the bike on a flat, we're not there to chase them out. I'm talking about the adults, the, the, the teenagers that are on the, on the court with the bikes, they're dropping the bikes there and they're just.
Doing damage, right.
Play basketball, they're not gonna do anything other than that.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna make it sound like we're, I mean, a family that's there, we want them to use it, they're not gonna be bothered by us, if anything, I think they'll see us there. Moving things along a little bit easier, because a lot of the issues that we're experiencing are coming from that area, it seems to be a gathering. We had a fight down there a week ago, um that was a, an incident that occurred. Um, not from there, but down the street somewhat, and an adult finally had enough and went down there and confronted the kids. Um, we brought the, the kid in here and we brought the adult and the parents in here to have a conversation. So I just think it's something that in the town was really good about um what the actions they took on it, so. So I don't want you to think that when we say youths annoying, I just think that we have to highlight this a little bit more, because we are experiencing a problem here in the north with the youth. And um we're on it, we're trying to push them along as much as we can, we had a lot of complaints of the kids, whether they're on the bike paths or whether they're on the sidewalks, refusing to get off the sidewalk.
Or in the road.
In the road, and, and, and the mayor called me last night.
I did.
A young man that we, that we, I've had a conversation with him.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and he's just. He, he has some other issues, so we, we spoke to him about it and um he seems to understand about it. So if you do have a situation, as I tell the, the residents, bring it to our attention, a lot of these kids we do know, and I think by having a conversation with them, it goes a long way, but some other ones, forget about it.
There's a lot of repeat offenders.
Yeah.
And then some of these individuals that have been arrested, um and I've talked to Jerry about it, I've talked to the courts about it, that when they're seventeen, eighteen. I don't even know if by sending them to community services is, is reaching, it's something we're, we might have to get a little bit more aggressive with the courts.
That's goes, goes, goes back to the point, Bob, we still have to have that meeting.
It works.
Right, Bob? We still have to have that meeting between the school, the county and.
And I will reach out and see if we can reschedule that.
Um, anything else?
The only other thing is that we did have break-ins that were occurring here in the, in, on cars. Um, it was on a Saturday night, we got a number of break-ins, uh we put some additional resources on that night, that Sunday night. Lo and behold, we grabbed the kids, uh most of the property has been recovered. Um, one of them went to um probation because of his age, the other one has, is in criminal court. Uh, we've received additional break-ins, so as they're coming in, he's, they're being charged. And it's, it seems to be the parent came in, they understand a little bit too, so. It was good work that was done by the officers.
That's great.
The ban on Saturday night and the event, Saint Mary's, that was a great time there, it was well attended. Um, there was no issues, and I say that because I know some people are concerned that there might be alcohol being served. The sandbar does a great job and Kevin does a great job there, there's no, there's been no issues whatsoever.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd bring it to your attention if there was, but there isn't.
Chief does have a um part-time officer that uh he'd like us to hire and what we'll do if it's alright with you is uh when you're done, we're done with your report. We'll go into executive session to just discuss that personnel, uh hire and come out and, and make a motion on it. Is there anything else you wanna add?
The other thing is firearms training was, was done by all officers, it's complete, finished.
Great.
Um, everybody passed it, um even I, even when I wear glasses this time. So everybody's, is up to par on that with our training and um it's all forwarded to uh our DCS.
Alright, great. Uh unless there's any other questions for motion to approve the police report?
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, all in favor, Ben, Brian, thank you, or Craig, whoever that was, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries, uh are you guys okay with jumping into executive session now? They're looking for motion to jump into executive session for just, uh for some discussing personnel.
Second.
Brian, uh and Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries, we're entering executive session at seven o'clock PM. I'm looking, uh it's seven oh five, I'm looking for motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Craig, and I'll give that to Ben.
I'll fight you.
Hold on, man, I gotta mark that, um. Craig, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. We beat you! Um. Alright, so we've ended executive session at seven oh five. Um, since chief is still here, um and we're still talking, um I'm looking uh for a motion to hire Dan Shem- Shemet.
Motion?
Um, as a part-time officer effective tonight uh to the village.
Second.
Police departments.
I'll make that motion.
Um, so uh motion offered by Bobby, seconded by Ben. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously, great. Thank you, chief.
And the officer, he is here.
Do you wanna introduce him?
Yeah, you wanna introduce him? Hop on his head and say hello.
Put a ring on the spot.
Outstanding. Immediately we'll ask him twenty questions. Yeah, we'll keep going. Um, and then now we'll progress.
This is, I'm gonna make sure the name, I say Shemet, is that correct, Shemet? Shemeti.
Hi, welcome.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you all.
Just wanna say hi, welcome.
Welcome.
Glad to have you aboard.
I appreciate it, um I'm looking forward and uh thank you.
Awesome.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Forward to working with you.
Thanks.
Thanks, chief. Alright, uh code enforcement reports, Mark.
Nigel, boy.
He's out, hope he's coming back with ice cream.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I'm, I guess, yeah, I was trying to clean up uh some of the properties a little bit as far as. The pop, properties are red tagged, uh I think I noticed I had multiples in both lists. So I just tried to pull the red tag properties on one list and the denim property. Um, but they're, they're all vacant properties. So I.
Uh, Mark, question on the sidewalk, we were gonna go back to the state engineer, the sidewalk over here, and we're gonna go back, did we go back to that and kind of challenge them on that?
We haven't done it yet, it's been something that we've been trying to do, but we've had some other things on the table.
Did they ever issue a report about it? Did they ever like?
They issued an email, wasn't really.
No, yeah, nothing, nothing substantial or technical.
No, not taking any ownership, that's for sure, right?
No, but if, if there was something to argue with, then that would be a starting point.
No.
Well, I definitely think the rerouted traffic from the code sixty-seven bridge.
Isn't that helping?
Is uh, is certainly an issue that need to be brought.
And that's gonna be for almost a year, correct? The.
No, I think it's supposed to be done the end of September, October, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But it's not gonna heal itself, and that stops.
No, it will not, so.
Okay.
Oh, I, I saw it's a big hole.
Hey, Mark.
Original bridge was from the uh Great Depression, or the earlier.
Hey, Mark and/or Andy, how does it work if a bench warrant for a failure to appear has been issued and the building is sold and the guy's no longer the owner?
Can you repeat the last part, the bench warrant's been issued?
Bench warrant has been issued for failure to appear, but the building is sold.
Well, the, the, the issue with the bench warrants, as we've talked about, is that the court's limited in its jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we just cancel the bench warrant?
Right, these code violations go with the property.
Okay.
So if the code violation continues, current owner now, boy, the code violations.
Lucky guy. Okay.
You know, they're, it, that's really the issue.
The old owner can't go in and fix it now, it's sold.
It's sold, if they go over the property, so the building still has a code violation, turn over.
It's, it's a property that's red tagged, I'm talking about Ruby Road, River Road.
Oh, yeah, it's multi-family.
It's red tagged, uh so, you know, I will, you know, what I will let, I'll work with the new owner to open up each apartment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we'll make sure and uh get, get it all back.
Was there any filings involved with that place?
Yeah, you, you can't really pass any fines on to the new owner, that I'm aware of.
No, cause the court will never have addressed the, the tickets issued to the prior owner. They did not have the ability to get them in front of the village court to oppose the fine.
It's, I, personally speaking, I'd rather see, and I do tell people, you know, we just, we wanna see these properties fixed up and put back in use, rather than just sitting there rotting.
Yep. Yep.
Only problem is that you have issues like people are hiding from us and the building continues to.
Dilapitate.
Dilapitate, nobody.
In that case, that, that previous owner is like in, he's moved three times since and he's somewhere over in New Hampshire or Massachusetts and. You know, it's like, why carry, you know, try and just close it out as we.
Well, I'm just looking at, you know, we have another one too, with the Richmond house is the same, same dilemma.
Yeah, it is.
That could go on for another two years as well.
It's frustrating, you know, I.
You can't, you can't go outside your jurisdiction to do anything with these things.
Unfortunately, the village court has limited territorial jurisdiction and the bench warrants are here in the village. And subject to check, this is under the criminal procedural law, only adjoining municipalities or within the county. The issue is, and when they start, certainly not outside the state, not, not for village court. But they are of limited geographic jurisdiction, so when the bench warrants hit, they can only go so far.
So i- in that case, Andy, for example, that, the one you're talking about, one seventy-five Church Street, I mean. He lives in the town of Housick. I know, right, right, you know, we know where he lives, I see him in the village all the time.
He's already in the law.
If, if the police see him, is that, I mean, they can, can they just arrest him knowing there's a warrant for his arrest or, does he have to violate another law first?
No, they arrest it, that's the way it works, you get arrested.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to, I've never had a warrant for my arrest, so I don't know how it works, so.
Some of the bench warrants have been executed for these code cases, and people have been brought in and they are booked.
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably had three or four of them.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I'm just curious, I mean, you know, cause. I see this name every week, every month, and I see him at least a couple times a month.
Not much else.
And now that building's vacant, so the only we do for this point.
I notice there's no lights on, cause right across my sun's on.
Yeah, the po- the power's on. So things continue to fall apart, you know, if I find something that's, that becomes a hazard, then I have a right to, like we do with other properties.
Condemn it and then.
Well, right, we can, we can send somebody there to make some fixes and, and charge it against the property.
Alright, okay.
But it does, it does bring up a discussion we still should have uh about the bigger issue of there are a lot of these vacant properties and one of two things happens. If it's not demolished or falls in, then sometimes it's bought by somebody who then rents it out to not the best quality tenants, that, that compounds our problems with the police and other issues in the village. And it becomes more unattractive, hard to sell houses with it, so what, what is our plan to somewhat deal with some of these? If we tear it down, then it's an, a vacant parcel of the tax roll, but then if we do what other places have done, sell it to the neighbor for a dollar with the agreement, they combine the parcels. So now you've got a parcel that's not, it's still, it's part of an improved parcel, it's not as much of a tax hit, but then it makes the village more attractive to move in. You know, where are the solutions we have, I think, especially with a list this long, to maybe improve the look of the village and also attract. People that are single family homeowners that.
I got a couple long-term things I'm looking into.
That's just to throw it out there, I think that this comes up a lot, but we've really should probably have a more proactive.
It's a lot of us, it's frustrating of others.
But that would help you too.
You're, we're somewhat limited in, in the fact that these things are, you know, they're, you know, they're zombie property, bank owns. Or, you know, they're maybe in the process of foreclosure and, and the foreclosures seem to take a long time sometimes. You know, and, and some of it's just uh, you know, just keeping up with the stuff that I need to keep up with and not really having the time to dive into.
Well, I think what I'm saying is even necessarily your issue as much as it's, it's a community wide issue.
I agree, I agree, I would like to s- I would like to have a, you know, communication sometimes just to see what we can do, you know, rather than run into a dead end on some of these. What can we do to stop the dead end process on some of these?
I mean, the worst thing that happens to a lot of the properties is it goes over a winter period and the pipes freeze and it devalues the house even more.
Yep.
But if we could get rid of some of those and have a neighbor have a bigger yard, that's better resale value for theirs, and the value goes up and the neighborhood's improved too. You know, where's our balance between all of these different things? Um, and it, like you said, every situation's complicated, but I feel like we should probably be working with the county more and maybe be a model for what to do. With some of these situations.
I wish the county would wait three years, you know, on the tax, I think that's too long.
Well, the city, the city of Troy takes proposals on uh tax properties and they sell it to somebody, has, they have to come up with a plan for the house and. How they're gonna fix it up or their plans for the future, and then they sell it for a lower rate than the county probably would get at an auction.
Right.
Which is another idea that we should probably look at and we.
But Troy, Troy controls their property taxes where county controls ours.
Ours. Any other questions, Mark?
No.
Nope.
Thank you, Mark, looking for um motion to approve the code enforcement report?
Second.
Brian and Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. No community service report tonight, I don't think you emailed me, but I asked for an, an update, so move on to highway DPW. Um, you guys have it all there, um Bobby or Neil, anything you guys, oh, I skipped the village one, sorry, village clerk, deputy clerk report, it is long.
I like the reading.
Long.
This is exhausting.
Exhausting, well, their data, their operations is exhausting.
We are very busy, but I didn't have time to put any of that down, there you go.
That's fine.
Five new home sales in June?
Um, maybe five, probably more. Honestly, Bobby couldn't go back to track it.
Okay, were they s- single, single family or?
You know, death certificates. Single families in a couple of the um apartments.
Okay.
Looking for a motion to approve it?
Motion.
I'll give that to Brian, thank you, and Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, DPW, any highlights you wanna say, Bobby or Neil?
Um, Neil, Neil, I quite have a question, we had many requests for the fifty-fifty sidewalk replacement, um how, we've had requests, is anybody pursuing that or?
All right, chat, no.
And, and do we have a um, as far as our chips, do we have any target streets for, for this summer to pave?
I actually did, like five, five streets and. With the price of laptop and some of the other little things we had to do to the streets, it's like doing Snow Street, classic. We got some sidewalk replacement on Snow Street, we had to do some curving to stop some of the flooding going in the properties that. Happened after they put the water line across Snow Street, so.
Happened after they put the water line across Snow Street, so.
Is that, uh, just upper classic or the whole upper classic? And Neil, too, uh, just your note on drainage on Richmond Avenue, just to say, that's really great job and thank you for doing that project. It's amazing, it's important, you know, you're helping out neighbors and keep doing what you do.
Only some people respect.
That's what I'm saying.
I have a, I I've, I've gotten a complaint on on that situation, I'm gonna be talking with that individual later this week.
Just a point on.
On what? On the Richmond Avenue work, I actually was late, very late to getting back to him, because I've been trying to get caught up on things, but.
I I wanted to note that that's, that's why our, your, you guys are very dedicated to the village, you do an amazing job because you take care of things like this. And I I wanna say I appreciate that you guys do that.
Yeah, um, and it's, it's good stuff going on in Richmond, so. Alright, uh, without any other questions, looking for motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Ben and Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm I'm in the face of an opposed, sorry.
Wait, what?
I said I, like, on a delay.
I knew where he was, sorry.
We got it, alright, uh, sewer departments, um. I don't think there's anything that jumps off except.
The only thing I'm quite, I I I'm confused, maybe I'm just stupid, but he, how, we have numbers from two thousand twenty on here?
Oh, um, his op, his stuff operated, I can change it, but he operates on a fiscal, so the the gallons last year were all fiscal last year. So what I did is I kinda reset it for 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 the nineteen twenty fiscal year.
I got you, oh, okay, alright, okay.
Um, it was confusing, so I'm gonna try to find a way to make that more clear, but that's a.
I got you, no, I just, okay.
I could very easily just make it a calendar year.
That works.
Is alright, okay.
Now that we know what it is, don't you?
Right, no, don't, no, I get it now, I just, I just was confused, I thought he was trying to compare it eighteen to nineteen, and I thought maybe just transpose the numbers.
Yeah. Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so that's fine.
I still have, um, the March numbers in the past year.
It's like the River Road pump station, it was a lot of fun this month, huh?
That's totally fine.
Plugged, wiring.
Curious, that's all.
All's well.
No, that's fine, thank you.
Today.
Today.
Always fun.
I'll make a motion to accept the second door department.
Thank you, and Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, uh, last one, water reports.
Um, yeah, besides the month to month they're all doing, they've been spending a lot of time on Rensselaer Street. Um, besides handing out flyers themselves today, above and beyond, thank you.
It is, it's above and beyond.
It is, it's awesome.
Um, they will be getting the new pump station online up there, which will greatly improve water service to.
Pressure.
Pressure, and yeah, uh, it'd be great, Craig, you can now run your dishwasher and shower at the same time, it's gonna be a big day at the pine house.
Looking forward to it.
I don't have a dishwasher, but I'm looking forward to it.
You're too, yeah, you're.
But your one is gonna be down the water on Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll be here.
I'm here all day.
You're here, it's fine, alright, uh, looking for motion to approve the report?
Motion.
Thanks, Craig, thanks Vanessa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, you guys received the minutes, um, looking for a motion unless there's a change, looking for motion to approve the June eleventh regular meeting minutes?
Second.
Brian and Ben, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, and the eloquently written June nineteenth special meeting once.
I do have a small correction on that one.
No, that's the one I did, alright, what do we got?
Just the first topic, it talks about what we talked about, but doesn't talk about what the resolution was that we had at hand, so if you go back and read that a year from now, we won't know what we were talking about. It was the resolution to accept the payment, but it doesn't say what we talked about.
What if we, um, add a C attached and we'll attach it to the minutes permanently?
I just put a little note in there.
Okay.
Just, the second one has something that did it fine, the second thing we talked about, you knew what we were talking about, the first one, when you read it, you didn't.
Yeah. See, I sat in this village clerk for one minute and you already get it.
Yes.
No, no, that's fine, that's good, uh, so with, uh, that one change where we will attach the resolution and add it, uh, to the minutes, so are there any other changes to be proposed?
Nope.
Then looking for motion to approve the minutes with the change from Craig about.
Motion to approve.
Special meeting?
Uh, I don't know who that was, Ben and Craig, great, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, that's fine, alright, Andy, it's usually rocking.
And just as a sidebar, you used, usually Marie writes trustee last name, you did first names, does that matter? The consistency of our, Rob did our first names for the motions, but Marie usually does trustee, patent trustee.
Oh, and individual.
But you did first names?
Oh, yeah.
Does that matter?
Ben and Craig.
Kind of, we will not.
Okay, that's, just checking.
Last time I do that, I'm just, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Alright, trustee committee reports, I know we've talked a lot about them already, but, uh, Vanessa, anything to add? Craig?
Um, we had something that we were gonna talk about, it was down here, I'm trying to find it, um, with.
Waste water treatment plant?
Yes, where is, is that?
That's under, second under new business, that is coming, yep.
I'll wait till we get there.
Alright.
Nothing else.
Brian?
Of course I do.
Yeah, well, Greenway.
Uh, two, couple things on the Greenway, one, um, the, I know Kevin, you'd been up there, I rode my bicycle up there today. Um, just to see how, what shape the trail's in, if it's ready to be reopened, it's technically reopened, and it is in, uh, unimpressive shape. There's a lot of areas that need repair, there's areas that weren't dug up, but from being driven on or clearly the barriers ripped in areas that wasn't damaged last year. Um, there's a lot of rough spots that were filled in, it's, it was, uh, not the most smooth ride. But also, the worst part was where it connects to sewer plant road, uh, besides being incredibly muddy and deep, I mean, I had to walk my bike and part of it. There's no way you'd get a stroller through there or on foot, I mean, it's, it's, it doesn't even look like it's a municipal trail at this point. It looks like one that was there a long time ago that was let go, and that, I know a lot of work's gone into it, so, uh, I'm really disappointed to see the shape it's in.
Did the company say they're done?
I reached out to Rich.
They're looking for a punch list for us, worth a finish on.
I reached out to Rich, Rich talked to one of the guys in 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 the contracting firm, he was under the impression that, based on the people doing the fieldwork, that it was complete. And Rich was like, it's not complete, so Rich is gonna be getting together with them to discuss it. Um, Brian, uh, took some pictures, Kevin, I think you also had some pictures?
Kevin had some, I had those, a nice video too.
It was very disappointing to see that, because it was such, it was in such great shape.
Yep.
Competed very well, and now it's, uh, they put crusher rundown instead of putting stone dust down and makes for a bumpy ride.
I have a feeling that, um, it fell casualty to the fact that the sewer project got delayed, so they moved, um, they removed, they moved their stuff off and were on a different. Um, job, so I I think that could be part of the, uh, the fact that 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 happened also, that Dave Lucas kind of, uh, ended up, um, retiring. Um, I I do have access to pictures and I'll just show you a couple examples of what he's talking about.
And I learned I can ride a bike and take video today without falling down.
But he didn't talk.
Would you have a helmet cam on?
Well, no, it's only my phone.
That's the end right by the sewer project where there's the, uh.
Yeah, it's not, that's the worst part, but there are others that are, um, part of the reason I was riding to do video too is to show where it had to stop or where it was bumpy.
There are a lot of pictures like this where the the stuff underneath is is showing.
Yeah, the fabric.
In some cases, the fabric's actually ripped up.
Yep.
So we just need to give them a punch list of what's not correct and see how they respond, and where they're not asking for payment on the job yet, right?
Uh, no, I don't think that's that far yet.
So, get a punch list and?
So, yeah, it's it's a work in progress, we're we're bummed that it's in the condition it is and we're gonna get it taken care of.
I think in some spots, they have to get a paver back like Pat did it, and I should roll it out, because, have you been down, Neil?
At least twice, three times a week.
But there's some areas where clearly heavy machinery is pushed.
Yeah, yeah.
Has created a trench or a trip hazard or a hole or a rip, I mean, it, there's tr- tire marks in some of the photos, those aren't, you know, the police car going down or your vehicle, they are larger machinery. So definitely an issue, the other thing was, um, I think, did I mention last meeting the email we received from a gentleman? He drove all the way here to do some bird watching, he actually sent another email, he actually sent a really nice photo of an owl that he saw down there, but he's eighty something years old, he's, you know, he's never coming back. Cause guy's dog was running and the guy said, this is a dog walking trail, blah, blah, blah. Um, I've had other people, both online and person, mention the issue with dogs running loose, I encountered one today. Um, you know, dog ran up and was, there was no owner in sight, and it was kinda chasing me on my bike, it was friendly, but still, I was like, uh. You know, the guy came up and he's kinda calling the dog, and I said, I stopped, I said, hey, we have a leash, you know, we have a leash law, and he was like, what are you gonna, call a cop? I was like, yeah, I'll text the chief right now, because who do you think you are? I go, the trustee on the board, who is the chair of the Greenway Committee, so, uh, you know, we have a leash law, you're on village property, and he was like, yeah, I guess I'll leash you, I'm like, good idea. So when I came back, I was taking pictures of the damage, and he goes, he was kinda harassing me, he's like, what, you're trying to catch my dog on leash? I'm like, no, I'm getting pictures of damage here, so you don't trip and fall while you're walking your dog on your leash.
So the action item is we're gonna put up the signs?
So.
I think that's gotta be.
Yeah.
When, yeah.
What I intended though is one at each entrance, because there's the St. Cobain entrance, so there'd be three on the southern leg, but one in the middle point in the northern leg, so, you know, people are aware as they're going. Um, just dogs welcome, but must be leashed.
Do we have a sign like that, the water, old water treatment plant?
If the water works, I, yeah.
Is there?
I wanna say there. Yeah, cause I, my dad did it all the time.
Well, yeah, that's the other thing I was gonna mention, it's like, you know, there's unbelievable amounts of.
Yes, that's part.
People walking their dogs and and not picking up after them, and the other question I had was, do we or can we get, um, like, bag dispensers? You know, like dog walking bag dispensers for, you know, the picking up after your dog, you see it in a lot of other areas, and I didn't know, it's just a.
The south end down by my house is.
Oh, but the waterworks, that area is very good, yes, the northern end is. Right.
So, hop out a post with the the bag dispenser and a sign.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Why don't you, uh, talk to Greenway about that and, uh, see how much that will cost and bring that back to us, and we'll move on that.
Okay.
When I saw Brian's post, by the way, uh, last Saturday when we had the concert in the park, there were two dogs running around without owners. And and I've seen it around town more frequently, maybe it should remind residents if there is a leash law.
Yeah, people get a lot of sass about it, they're, it's like.
Yeah, sorry, it's, it's a lull, anything else, Brian?
I could come up with more, yeah, um, one more LW.
Actually LWRP was last night.
So last night, um, we had our pretty much final committee meeting for the LWRP, the Waterfront Redevelopment Project. Um, the board will be receiving a draft of that when, you know, they they should have all the graphics in and maps and, there's a lot of big ideas in it. The idea is this is, uh, will be accepted by the board at some point in S E C R and that's all coming, but the idea is to look through and say, this is what the committee's put together. Uh, there's been three public sessions where the public has come to share ideas or discard ideas. Um, it's a pretty in, uh, impressive plan, there's some short goals to meet and some other ones that could take a long time. Uh, things that we can do easily, things that, but what it does is opens up funding to do these things, so it's more than just, here's a plan. It's also the key to unlock that funding from the state to actually do a lot of these things, uh, and I hope everybody will be impressed with it, we will hopefully have that, but ahead of the next, uh, board meeting.
Alright.
So, it's a big step, alright, and there's twenty eight different ideas in there.
Sheesh. Ah, gives me the heebie jeebies more things, alright, Bobby.
The only thing I had, I wanna talk about the court audit, I wanna clarify, just what, I mean, Holly, you reached out to Holly, right, Marie too? Is there something, I mean, I did the audit from December, well, actually, it was from January one eighteen to, uh, yeah. December thirty one eighteen to January one, uh, not A L R, sorry, January one eighteen, December thirty one eighteen, that's been done. But they want something more, they want this fiscal year, is that what they're asking for now?
Um, I reached out to Andy with that also today, because after reading the letter, they're also asking us for, um, a resolution. That we acknowledged that the required examination was conducted.
We took. And we did, we did that in the meeting, I know we did, I I.
We did that when we approved it.
When we approved it.
Andy, what are your thoughts?
Last year.
In, yeah, in December, we did.
It's confusing because our. Have you seen this letter?
It was sent to me, I overlooked it, so.
I'll take a look right now?
Well, I'll certainly take a look.
It's on its way.
It's confusing because.
Other than the resolution, I didn't realize that we had.
I know you did.
Cause the fiscal years in the calendar year.
Yeah.
And Holly, Holly sent that.
Last year, they said they wanted it done based on the calendar year.
Yeah.
And they wanted to wait until all of December's, until the full year was done, that's what we waited to do it.
I don't know why it came now. Oh, that would've been easier to hand over.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So sorry.
It's totally fine.
I mean, I have no problem meeting with Holly again and doing whatever you want us to do, I just need to know whether it needs to actually be done.
It's confusing if the remarks came out June four.
Well, I think kinda the way they said it, they want you to provide a copy of the audit of your local court's records for fiscal year ending in twenty nineteen. So, our fiscal year ended in June, right?
May thirty first, right?
Yeah, ended in thirty first.
So that's what I think they're asking for, even though we've got the December, we, from January one, should make it be one.
So we need from, we actually done, we need from January one nineteen to the end of May.
Yeah, sounds what it sounds like, Andy, is that how you read it?
That is how I'm reading it, I'm looking for the municipality's fiscal year.
Right.
So at the end of your fiscal year, you're like, Bobby, just update that.
So they, they changed.
So, okay, so I'll, I'll get with Holly and we'll do from January until the end of May, and that's no problem.
Once done.
Is this the only person who wants the report, is this the only customer?
It's the court system.
The court system.
So now we should just move our audit date until August.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and then so next year, do it in August, so you get the cali- you do it for fiscal year and.
It's done, right, rather than me doing it twice, right, right.
Right, okay, uh, when you have it done, tell Andy so he can put a resolution together.
Sure, cause Holly has.
Alright.
Cause usually they generate a like, a report to Holly, or a form to Holly, and that's the form I go through and check off.
Right.
And then submit, sign it and submit it to the village court.
Thank you.
Kinda gently.
Laptop got mileage today.
See, do it now and then, but you don't have to do it again in January, you get to wait till next summer.
Yep.
Right, right, so, fine by me.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Ben, I know we already talked to this woman.
Yeah, um, the only thing I'll say is that, um, I did hear from Matt, he did say no, he was not aware of that as far as, but. I also told him that if you got me a copy of it, I would send it to him, so.
Okay, let me make sure I didn't, wrote it?
Remind, oh, the, the.
Yeah. The, uh, mailer?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't remember seeing it, but it doesn't mean that I just didn't toss it when I, you know, when it came in and didn't look at it, so if you have it, let me have it, I'll make a copy.
I have it at home, I'll try to scan it.
I think I have it.
Plus I did tell him that we had a discussion about the, uh, transfer station and and that, and I would get, I would give him more information, so.
Alright, thank you, Kevin?
That's it, yeah, I'm done.
Any else? Alright, great.
What's the next coming, or the next, uh, music is July twentieth, correct?
July twentieth, yeah.
Awesome.
And I expect a huge crowd.
That's the music Bloomsday as well.
Yeah, that's gonna be, that'll be a large crowd.
That'll be great, there'll be a lot going on in the village in one week.
It's also member guest weekends, there'll be a lot of people.
Okay.
I asked about to, uh, the officer, I'm in the park, so, just to be safe.
Good.
Perfect.
Alright, um, thank you, uh, going on to old business, we've already discussed municipal building phone systems, so I'd like to have a motion to table that.
Motion to table.
Second.
Brian and Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, should've asked if there's any discussion there, but I don't think we have any. Alright, so last we, uh, we were discussing, last, um, meeting we had a handicap parking permit request, uh, for Elm Street, um. Neil and I went over there today and looked at where some things are parked over there, um, this is the building in question, I'll show it to you guys in just a minute.
Let's see a little down story.
That's not it, that's fireworks, yeah, so this is the, the, the corner building, uh, the, the, the street right here has the no parking after, what is it? What is it? No overnight parking, that's the sign. Um, there's a couple of spots over here by the railroad track where people are, were already parked, and there's the side lot over here where people are parked. That's the side lot where people are parked.
Side along the building though, like where that's.
Where the chairs are.
There's also this property right, right there, it could also be used for parking.
That actually is probably the only legal spot to use, because across.
The railroad is not there.
Which one's that? The one by the chairs?
This is probably, so, I don't, do we know which apartment she needs it for? It's apartment two.
Apartment two A.
She's upstairs.
That's a parking spot on private.
Handicap, handicap parking and she lives upstairs?
But that's, so that's, that's a parking spot on private property.
Which the landlord should.
The request was for on the road.
Right.
Right, so we can't put authorize a private, a handicapped, they can do whatever they want on their property, right?
I don't think we can authorize it, cause it would require, it would be against our current.
Revert it to the property owner at this point, just say.
Say if the, well, talk to the prop, I thought we were gonna talk to the landlord on it and see if they would agree to something like that.
Yeah, I'm sure he would. I just let him know that we were looking at it.
Alright, so can you communicate that we can't do it on the road and see how that, how that works? Alright, okay.
I mean, she, she, she took the apartment as is, where it is.
On the second floor?
Down the second.
Yeah, it'd kinda hard to modify that parking there, instead we just voted on the parking across the dregs.
Right.
Like six months ago.
Yeah.
Um, is there, do we have to make a motion for anything on this? Cause I feel kinda like a jerk.
No, don't.
Making a motion to deny a handicap.
Can we just, can we just, can we make a motion to table it or no action?
Motion, no action either.
No action.
Okay, no action, okay.
Uh, also last, uh, meeting, we ta, we had a request to refund a portion of the water bill. Um, we had talked about, um, some previous ways that we had denied water bills recently. Those were all tenants, landlord, or abandoned building, the, the two that we had prior. Kevin, um, the office sent you, what did you guys send them today?
Only one is really comparable to the, the one that were in question and, uh, you refunded. I think they averaged out. She had a broken faucet outside that leaked and then, uh, you refunded. They did an average of her water for the, uh, usage periods and took that off from her bill.
Hello, when you look through some local laws, and like, do a huge deep dive, but enough to find, we have a local law that basically says the board can only adjust. Bills if it has to do with a meter problem. So if our local law is saying that's what we can adjust water bills. Isn't that what we're kinda, probably should continue that precedence and that if it wasn't a meter issue, then we don't touch it? Cause the law says that.
My easy answer would be, you, you need to follow your village local law.
Yeah.
If it's limiting adjustments to problems with the water meter, then if it's something else, then it does fall on the property owner.
I mean, I'm okay with that moving forward. I, people should know that and we shouldn't be going back and adjusting anybody's.
Right.
We, that's something, there was another one that was adjusted too, that Marie sent me and I didn't get time to look at that one.
That's a pretty clear cut law, right?
Unless there's something in the local law that allows otherwise.
Review that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Just as a.
Well, while you're, while you're doing that, uh, a request from the town, uh, like for the waters. We are in the process of, uh, working on a grant, we're putting in a, a small spray pad at, uh, the pool for younger kids. And part of the pushback on that is we're gonna, uh, the number of features that we have is gonna use a tremendous amount of water, so we're gonna come back on the features, but. And, and, uh, um, working with that, we wanted to see if just for that spray pad, um, there would be a way that the village would waive. The usage fees.
Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't the spray, the, the spray pad recirculate its water?
I don't think you can use that code anymore.
Uh, yeah, no, it's, uh, it's gonna be, uh, the system that we're looking at is going straight to drain.
Okay.
Um, just because of the problem that we had before with the recirculation, um.
Recirculation?
Yeah, there's, counties end up shutting us down.
Cause of bacteria or something, Mark?
Just drain too? The fountain in Monument Park, does that just, that's just to drain, right? There's no. Oh, it does? Oh, I didn't know that. I was wondering.
So as part of that research, maybe if that's something that the board would consider, you know, for that, it would just help the town.
What's that, you wanted to pay double for it? Oh, that's, that's very noble, thank you.
That's shared, that's shared services.
I think we should trade.
Trade for the recycling, they're good.
Recyclable for water usage.
Certainly could work.
Go back to the water. Talk about that.
Yeah, finish that first, right? So we have a local law.
Brian, did you say there's a local law or was it a state law?
Law that when we searched through the database and it had to do with adjusting bills, and the only thing I found specifically about adjusting was. And again, I didn't spend tons of hours doing it, but I did spend, I think I sent you a copy of it, um.
So I, let's make a motion, can we, can we table this for another month until we can review the local law? Cause we're not gonna review it in this meeting right now, can we just table it till next month?
That's what I was thinking.
You making that motion, Craig?
I suggest we just follow it.
You making a motion?
I'll second it.
Motion to table it till next month?
Table until the attorney can.
Any further discussion?
Table until.
Favor on tabling?
Until the attorney can review it.
Alright, all in favor on, um, on tabling?
Yes.
Hi.
opposed? Alright, tabled. Alright, thank you.
Oh.
What?
Oh, I just remembered one thing, um, I just wanted to bring up, last, last month, I had, uh, discussed about the, the building with the. Sign for Anne, and I told you today, I, I am still waiting to hear back from.
Okay.
And I just, I would make sure we do that for on the agenda for next month, as long as we get everything organized, so.
Making note of that, the.
The dedication of, of the building to Anne or whatever we're doing.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Alright, um, Holly Garage Grant, um, so I feel like, uh, I, you guys got a, a couple of the tabs. Of listing all the, um, the bids that came back.
Yep.
We had, Neil, we had three for HVAC and one for plumbing, is that correct? Three bids, but one of the bids was void because they didn't have the insurance stuff, right? Um. It, it was one of the, it's, it's the spreadsheet that came out, is that, did anyone, Craig, can I see that one for a minute? Trying to, we, you handed it out earlier, I can't remember.
That was the, the stack you passed down here.
Okay, alright, okay, good, okay, that, we, we have that. Um, that's the one, this is the one, this is the one, yeah.
Yeah.
This, this is the one for the, um. Can't remember which one, this is for HVAC. There were three given for HVAC, um. One of them was void because they didn't have, uh, all the stuff that was required. Um, contract number two was, um, is actually, uh, the lowest contract for, for this one is the same people who are the, uh, the GCs. For this, general contractors, and they were the ones, the only ones who put forth on plumbing. Um, the budget for this right now, based on the sheet that was sent to us, is one point four three and a one point one million dollar grant. Neil and I talked earlier, um, as a, wha, what do we do? And I think that we both agree that we need to table this and dig in deeper and get a plan for how this will be paid for if we can afford it. Neil, is that your thoughts and do you wanna add anything else?
Yeah, I'm looking at an extra million.
We're looking for extra buildings to be dropped off? So, um, uh, it's an unfortunate situation, cause we had tried to get this timed perfectly to move on. But it's gonna be more expensive, we still have uncertainties and, uh, we still need to figure out where the funds are gonna come from.
Okay, so, wha, how, when does the, um, grant that we have, is there a expiration date? As far as when the monies are no longer available to us or?
No, there's, there's no concern about that.
Okay.
They checked, um, a while back when the, 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 um, power structure in the state and, uh, Senate Assembly all shifted. Um, but they, once they knew that we had already done, um, working on plans, they were like, alright, that's, that's, that's fine, that will, that will keep on, so there's no issues there. Um, and I think that there's no issues with waiting a month, in terms of how long the bids last, cause if I'm correct, the bids last for forty-five days?
That's correct.
And so we'll still fall, fall within that window.
Did anyone give, um, reasoning for the increase of the, um, why the bids gone, have gone? Is it because of the tariffs on the, the, you know, materials or?
We didn't get any information on that, um.
Cause that's what I was told by, um, um, as far as the electrical, um, uh, I spoke with, uh, one of the employees of. Who runs Bradley's and he said that, that his, he didn't think he was gonna be able to keep their bid the same either, because of the fact that. The tariffs were gonna be going into effect and it would affect his bottom line from the previous bid.
Yep. So, uh, so yeah, I don't have any yippity positive on this, just frustration. Craig's so frustrated, he walked out. Um, so I guess, um, our recommendation is we table it.
Motion to table.
Alright, from Ben?
Second.
Second, Brian, any further discussion on this?
That's too bad.
It is very too bad and Neil's on like month nine of delay here. You're, you're holding it together, great.
We're still going forward though.
We are still going forward, we're just gonna table it and get some more details together, alright.
I'm in favor of that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention from the guy who's out there.
Can always get you a wood stove, Neil.
Just don't burn any white wood.
One of the things I'd raise and something to be to think about, following up on the discussion about, um, the services being provided to the village. If you look at the updated budget, there is a line item for additional services. And it's the HVAC plumbing rebid, construction observation and site plan revisions. So the fact that the HVAC and plumbing needed to be rebid.
Right here.
The village had been charged for, for that.
Twenty-four thousand.
For the board to look and say, well, why did we need to rebid this?
Mm-hmm.
If the board will recall, it's rebid because the initial contractor recommended by the village engineer. Proved not to be fully vetted by the engineer, so these are some things that I think are subject to discussion. We're trying to take a look at, work the budget.
Yep, okay. I expect, based on my last email, those discussions will be happening pretty soon. Alright, um, so we have tabled that. We tabled the highway garage grant for next, next month, alright. The UV disinfection treatment projects. Um, well, one thing that they did have time for was to get all these documents together for us. Um, the, we had done a engineering planning grant to add UV filtration at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, it was a thirty thousand dollar engineering planning grant, it's pretty much completed, they're just getting the final details into the state right now. Um, the idea wa, for that was because the new speedies requirements in twenty twenty-two, this will be a requirement on the wastewater treatment plants going forward. Uh, so we'll need to have it by twenty twenty-two. There is a water quality improvement project program, uh, it's a state, uh, grant. Where they will match, um, I think up to a million based on our size. Uh, and they will, and we have to produce twenty-five percent and the state will produce the rest. Um, so I think they sort of saw, saw this as about a one point two five or one point two million dollar project. That if we went through, um, if we, if we went for this project, it would be. It would cost the village about two hundred fifty thousand, the rest would be up to a million covered by, um, the state. The question that they provided was, do we wanna, um, move through on this and put the application in for it?
So did they provide any documentation yet?
Yes, um, I got this. Which looks to be copies of the water quality improvement projects, just the program in general. Um, thank you. Um, they sent us all of the required seeker documents that would have to go forward for putting the application for this program through. Um, I think this is just some of what they sent to us. Um, so if we, if we moved on an application, doesn't say we're gonna get it, but, um, if we moved on it, all the information is here.
Have they completed all of that or is that just the form?
Uh, I think they have the application to ready, uh, they will get the application ready to go, because the timeline for this year's entry is coming soon.
Yeah, cause they also wanted us to.
It's Jul, end of July, right?
They also have, is this the resolution if we did it? Uh, they, they did provide the resolution if we decided to go on this. Um, and it basically would say that, um, the village board on behalf of the village will complete the necessary actions to authorize expenditures for the proposed project. As well as authorize Mayor Allen to execute necessary documents, uh, relative to and as required for the application. Um, it, the village board would accept that they shall provide at least twenty-five percent match of the total of any grant funding awarded as a local match. In the form of in-kind services or cash contributions, um, with a bunch, a couple blanks.
Have you had a chance to read any of it?
I've seen none of it.
Okay.
Emails came in this afternoon.
Yeah, it came in late.
So they put us over a barrel where this has to be done by the end of July.
Only, only forgetting it for this year's, uh, application process, we can always go for next year, but yes, keep going, please, that's.
And they want us to act on a resolution on something we haven't read yet, after their track record has gone.
Yeah, that pretty much summarizes it.
Just to sum it up.
In a nutshell.
Uh, in no mind, in no way did I wanna move on this, but I did wanna present it so everyone knew what was going on.
So, none of us write this, including our lawyer, so I don't think we should act on it. If we read it and think, jeez, we really ought to jump on this before the end of July, we have time to call a special, if it's that important. We can call a special meeting and come back.
I don't even think we should act on it this year, because if we're talking about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar expense for this, we need a budget for that.
Un, unless we're missing out on the million, because we can't configure up the two hundred fifty.
It'll, we can apply.
As long as it's still there, yes, then I completely agree.
So I'll make a motion to table this for a year?
No, I, no, I think we, we should do the work now.
We should read this and understand whether we wanna do it, so then we can budget for it for next year.
Okay.
But we should, we have the, we have everything, we need to do the work, we don't have to do it tonight.
Yeah, so no action's necessary, cause there's just a discussing on the agenda, but I wanna make sure it's out there.
Yeah, and, you know, and, and I go, I don't know about everybody else, but MRB is really starting to get pretty thick under the skin.
This sounds familiar, like someone said earlier.
Kinda like that, yeah.
Very, very frustrating, the service we're getting from them.
So.
After Dave, since Dave left.
Alright, uh, transfer station, we talked about this earlier in the mayor updates, um, and I think we had, uh, we, did we do the motion to table it?
Yeah, yes, we did.
So we can, this is already tabled.
Yeah.
Uh, for next time, we hired the part-time officer, uh.
So, so just to follow up on that, can you send those documents out? I mean, I, I'll read through them and.
The emails, yes.
Yeah, whatever MRB did send, I mean, send it out to us.
Remind me all four, whatever I have, uh, although you should have it, do you have it all?
I have it all, I can forward it.
Okay, alright, yes, we'll do that. Um, we did have a request from Holly as the court, uh, clerk to, um, have some mandated court training out in Syracuse. Um, you had some details on that? Uh, Dear Mary Allen Board of Trustees, I'm requesting permission to attend the annual Court Clerks Conference in Syracuse, New York from Sunday, September twenty-ninth. Through Wednesday, October second. Uh, this is our first year of mandatory training. The cost is fifty to register, and she has figured out five hundred ninety-two dollars, eighty-eight cents for three nights of lodging. And meals for a total of six hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Um, and I think she would be doing this with the town court clerk, as well, they're sharing. Uh, a room, so that they can, uh, cut down on costs.
I make motion that we approve this.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
I, when she provides all of the sheets.
Motion carries, thank you. Um, we did have a request from the village office staff to adjust the amount on a tax bill, and I think this was just kind of a whoops, the wrong person got charged. Marie, do you have information on this?
Yeah, it, basically it was, um, the. The one homeowner went to the wife instead of to the ex-husbands, so we had to move it off. So one, one of the bills had the relevies on it and it belonged to the other party, so.
Uh, we just have to.
Just had to move them out and adjust the two bills.
Um, so we are looking for a motion for what?
Just basically that we can send this on to be corrected.
The proper, the proper.
To the proper relevies to go onto the right tax bill.
Motion to adjust.
Anybody, is that right?
It is, just, just to, it's an administrative correction on the re levy.
Okay, so Ben had the motion, I think Brian, second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, carries, uh, last one, um, we did get, uh, one bid back for each of the, the, the pickup trucks. Um, the old ones that we're getting, that we've already accessed, I checked in the minutes last month. Uh, one of them was for four hundred and thirty-one dollars and the other one was for four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Um, so all we need is, um, a motion to accept these bids, um, to sell these vehicles to Cahills.
Motion.
Thank you, Vanessa. Second, Craig, any further discussion? Neil, what if we add a zero and we'll, we'll put it all at the highway garage?
Boy, the Cahills will like that.
Oh, I'm sorry, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, does anyone else have anything they wanna bring up? In that case, I'm looking for motion to adjourn.
Motion.